If the, you know, if you can't get the poop out, what are you gonna do?
Exactly, yeah. And that's where engineering and the city staff comes in. They evaluate all that.
Yeah, this might be a clip that I use. If you can't get the poop out, what are you gonna do?
And you simply say it, but you're exactly right.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. That's just so funny.
And so just because our population says we're at fifty-two thousand, if you look at our daily population, the amount of people that are in town during the day, it's sometimes a hundred thousand.
You think there's a hundred thousand people here?
They, it's, it shows, the data shows.
The data shows that there's a hundred thousand people in Twin Falls?
During the day.
During the day?
Yeah.
You're blowing my mind. I cannot believe that. That's crazy, dude. Probably because of the data of the little thingy that they cross.
Well, that's part of, part of one of the things that.
Alright, alright, alright. Put this here. How's your day going?
Alright, how about you?
Uh, it's, uh, it's going. I was editing last night, uh, till like twelve o'clock at night. I had like this, I had an audio issue on the last podcast, so I had to do this weird crazy thing where I had to like sync up the audio and I was like, oh, that's the best I can do. So let me try to sync it up again. I mean, maybe that's what did it. It's like this crazy slap or something. I'm not sure. First time that ever happened. But, uh, yeah, I was staying up last night trying to resolve that. Alright, there's that open. And then, ah, and then the questions. Perfect. And I'm gonna try to push all of these podcasts. I mean, one after another, one after another, one. As fast as I edit it, I'm gonna be like bam, here you go, you know? So, alright, to get the ball rolling here, uh, welcome to another Here and Now Podcast. I have Craig here, right?
Craig Kelly, yes.
Craig Kelly. And, um, I don't know anything about you, so this should be interesting. We'll see where this kinda goes. Um, uh, Craig, I guess maybe let's start off with like, um, like who are you? Like, uh, like, uh, how, um, uh, who are you is really what I wanna know, you know? Like, who are you? You know, cause I've never heard of you, to be honest with you. I'm not, you know?
Sure.
Yeah.
Uh, well, I'm Craig Kelly. I, uh, I've lived in Twin Falls my whole life.
Okay.
Um, I went to University of Idaho. I have a degree in plant science.
Oh, plant science?
Plant science, yeah.
Oh, so like, uh, is that like a, uh, like a, like, what, what, what do those people do? Like?
So it's a horticulture, so like nursery management, uh, trees and shrubs.
Oh, okay.
So my family had a business in town, uh, Kelly Garden Center, the barn over on Addison and Eastland.
Oh, is it, uh, the one by like, but over Kmart?
Yeah, yeah. So it's Web, Web Garden Center now.
Oh, yeah, that used to be, uh, your family's, uh, place? Oh.
That's where I worked for ten years.
Oh, okay. Well, probably people, people go there all the time, so most likely somebody has ran into you over there, cause people need like trees and plants and things like that.
Yeah, that's where I met a lot of people. I, I, that's what brought me back to Twin Falls was to run my family business, so.
Oh, so what is it? So what is that you do now?
Uh, actually, I'm not, I don't do anything related to my degree. I, uh, I work for Trinidad Benham. I trade, uh, dry beans, rice, popcorn, and aluminum foil all over the world.
Oh, that's interesting. You're like, so, so you're like, you're trading this stuff around?
Buy and sell it, yeah.
Oh, you're buy and sell? Okay, so buy some beans, sell it over here, you know, get some aluminum, you said?
Yeah, aluminum foil. So I know, it's a weird combination, so.
Oh, that's a, that's a weird job, you know? Buy, sell, uh, stuff around all, uh, the world. And for what company is that?
Uh, the company's called Trinidad Benham, and the company locally is called Treasure Valley Seed.
Treasure Valley Seed. I think I've heard of that. Uh, yeah. I mean, there's a lot of, like, you know what's interesting? There's like a lot of businesses around Twin Falls that people don't even know. Uh, like, uh, I think there's like a box making company.
Yeah.
And they make boxes for Amazon. So when you buy something from Amazon, it's like that box was made here in, uh, Twin Falls, Idaho.
I work right across the street from there.
Oh, really?
Yeah, that's where my business is.
Oh, there you go. That's awesome. Yeah, they, the, the box people, they have some kinda cutting machine or something like that. I wanted to look at it. Cause I'm all into like 3D printing and, you know, cutting stuff and so forth. I think they can like do custom cuts on boxes and whatever.
Yeah, you should see it. It's very creative what they can make with that machines.
Yeah, they, um, at, uh, the Cliff Bar, uh, uh, grand opening, they made a bicycle out of a cardboard. And I was like, this is the coolest thing I've ever seen. It was like, getting like shots of the bike. Um, I don't know where that bike is, but I want it, okay? Whoever's got it, let me have it.
It's gotta be around somewhere.
It's gotta be somewhere. It was so cool. I was like, I want that bike. Uh, it was so cool. But, uh, that's cool. So, um, so, uh, yeah, maybe talk to me about like, so did you grow up in Twin Falls? Like, uh?
I grew up in the Magic Valley. I went to Wendell High School, graduated from there. I went to University of Idaho after that and then came back here to Twin Falls.
Okay.
Um, my family's business brought me back, but when, uh, in two thousand and six, I left the family business.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but I wanted to stay in Twin Falls. And so the opportunity arose with a company called Ringen Incorporated, which was a hundred year old company. Um, and, uh, Ringen was just purchased by Trinidad Benham in nineteen, so I stayed with the company. Keeps, keeps me in Idaho, keeps me in Twin Falls, and, and that's important, so.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. So, yeah, I mean, uh, would you say Idaho is a great place to raise a family? Like, you, you see, do you foresee yourself moving to anywhere else?
Well, um, no, I'm.
No, you're like, I'm good here.
I, I am. Um, the company I work for is headquartered in, in Colorado and, and, um, I'm sure they would probably like me to move there, but I've said no.
Yeah, you're like, I, I like, I like where I'm at.
And I, I'm invested. I, I'm, I'm the, I've been on planning and zoning for the city of Twin Falls for four years.
Oh, okay, there we go. So when I was talking to one of the people, uh, I, I, geez, I'm so bad with names, uh, the, uh, I was talking to one of the people and he said, he kinda gave me an overview of, uh, everybody that was, uh, um, uh, running. And he said, well, we've got a planning and zoning guy that's also running. So you're that guy?
I'm that guy.
Oh, okay. Uh, that's perfect. So, yeah, that, uh, who said that? Patrick said that. There you go. So Patrick, this Patrick guy, he knows a lot. Uh, uh, so, and he's met everybody apparently too, so, uh, that's kinda cool. So this is interesting. You're on the planning and zoning, right?
Correct. So I'm the current vice chairman of the.
Vice chair. We've got a vice chair planning and zoning here. This is good stuff. I'm so excited now, you know? Well, um, this is great because like maybe you can kinda like try to educate us on, uh, what, how does planning and zoning exactly do? I kinda wanna dive in a little bit about, into that. Like, what, what does planning and zoning do exactly and how does it work? And maybe try to explain it to me like I'm a five-year-old, you know, like dumb it down for everybody, you know?
Well, the simple answer really is, uh, a developer in town, for instance, wants to create a new subdivision.
Yes.
So they meet with the city office and discuss their plans.
Hmm, who did they come to? Did they come to you?
They come to the planning and zoning director.
Planning and zoning director, okay.
And they present their request and, and the staff goes through all the instruction and, and guides them kinda the rules and regulations of ours, of our town.
Uh-huh.
Um, what they need to do. Um, they present their plans to the staff or to Jonathan, he's the planning and zoning director.
Oh, okay. So, so basically a builder comes in and he goes to the director of the planning and zoning, tells them like, yeah, like I wanna submit, this is what I wanna do. And he tells them like, these are the rules that we have for the, the city itself. And then, uh, what happens? This is very fascinating.
So then they, they, they come up with their plan and, um, they do a final submission, which goes in front of planning and zoning.
It's, it's a committee, right? Is that a committee? So basically you sit on that committee itself, right? So how many people are in that committee?
There are seven on the commission, so.
Okay.
Um, and so between, so they present their request to the, to the commission.
Yeah.
And, um, basically we, uh, we assess that plan to the comprehensive plan that the city of Twin Falls has. And our Title Ten rules and regulations for, for land that we have in the city.
Gotcha, gotcha.
We, we, we weigh that request against those criteria. And, um, if they do follow the criteria, um, and everything looks appropriate and follows the law, then we decide whether to, um, pass it.
Hmm.
Which sometimes those, um, go on to city council to be decided on, and we make a recommendation to city council.
Oh, but, uh, so sometimes as you guys pass it and it's just passed, sometimes it's like passed, but it goes to city council and then make the final decision itself.
There's a special use permit. A lot of times it's passed within, um, planning and zoning, but if, uh, a final plat or a final decision on, on a subdivision or, or something like that, we'll go to city council for final decision.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. And, um, how can somebody like, uh, so this is my understanding of, uh, like, so currently all the different, uh, areas of Twin Falls are zoned differently, right? Is there an easy way for somebody to kinda see how things are zoned, I guess? There's gotta be a map.
There is. Uh, the planning and zoning map is, is on the planning and zoning website for the city of Twin Falls. Really easy to pop up.
Hmm.
Uh, it's one of the links when you first, um, uh, enter the site.
Yeah.
Um, and it'll show you, and it's color coded. It's very easy to, to, to see what is zoned and, and what the zones mean.
Gotcha. And how many different zo, different types of zoning is there?
There's a, there's quite a few, but there's your basic ones that people are familiar with. Industrial, residential, um, you know, downtown, there's canyon rain overlay. There's a lot of different.
And these have, these different zoning area, zoning, uh, things have like different rules that they have to kinda follow.
Correct.
And then the rules, I'm assuming they're also on the website as well too.
Correct.
Oh man, I feel like we're getting all educated now, you know?
So, so one of the things that we did with planning and zoning the last four years though, was we rewrote the Title Ten laws and codes to make them more accessible and easier to understand.
Okay, yeah. See, I never looked into this, but now you got me interested. Now I wanna know like what the thing is, what the diff, cause especially like the residential one, the commercial one, the downtown one, the top ones, I would basically say. And there, I'm, I'm assuming then there's also a process, like let's say something is set up as like, uh, commercial and they wanna try to convince you guys that, hey, we need to change this to residential or something like that. There's a process to do that as well, right?
Yeah.
Go to the director, tell him exactly what you're gonna do, and then, and then, uh, then it goes through that process. Now, is it giant chunks that are basically getting changed, or is it just like little tiny properties or so forth?
It's, it's both. There's, um, there's large areas of the city that will, the developer may wanna develop a subdivision for, for residential housing.
Hmm.
There's also, um, as you know, there's a lot of small lots around town that are empty.
Yeah.
And sometimes those need a zoning change or, or special use permit.
Yeah.
And so a developer may come for just that little half acre piece of property as well.
No, okay. So I'm like, oh, that's, I need this to be changed to like residential, so I can build houses on this.
Yeah, or if it hasn't been used in a while, but the, the new Title Ten rewrite, you'll find, um, is gonna be a lot easier to understand.
Yeah.
Um, it'll be easier for development, but the rules and regulations are still in place to, to make sure things are correct.
Gotcha. So you must be looking at a lot of land maps then?
Yes.
I can, uh, I can, I can already envision what you're doing, you know, like looking at like land maps. Here's a brilliant question that just popped in my head. Is there room for housing? Like, do we have the land to put more houses to be built on?
Yes, within the city limits, there's still plenty of room to, to develop more subdivisions, more housing, which is needed.
Is there a way, like, we, like, I mean, like, this is what I really wanted to know, like, how many houses can we build with the current existing, uh, like, uh, zoning that we currently have essentially?
Well, that's based on rules and regulations. There is a density, um, that is associated with certain zones of the city.
Oh, this is interesting. So like, uh, each zone cannot have too many houses on there or something like that, right?
Yeah, it's regulated.
Oh, so what's the, what, what is it typically at? Like, okay, this?
Just depends on the, on the land that's being developed.
Oh.
But, but the other thing you have to consider is, do we have the water?
The water, the infrastructure.
Do we have the city services for those areas as well?
Man, this is, you know, running a city is not as easy as I thought it would be. Like, I'm like, oh, I, listen, I'll just go in there and my boom, 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 no, no. Apparently, nah, there's so many rules and regulations, you know, and it's like, well, we need these, we have these regulations because the infrastructure might not be able to support it. So if we put a bunch of houses and we don't have enough water to run to them, or like a sewer gets too, backed up too much, then you got a problem. You can build as many houses as you want, but if the, you know, if you can't get the poop out, what are you gonna do?
Exactly, yeah. And that's where engineering and the city staff comes in. They, they evaluate all that.
Yeah, this might be a clip that I use. If you can't get the poop out, what are you gonna do?
And you simply say it, but you're exactly right.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. That's just so funny. Um, that's interesting. Um, is there like, uh, obviously, you know, uh, houses are through the roof. We, like, it kinda seems like, uh, we have like, uh, sometimes like very low inventory of houses for sale. So I'm like, people are like, we need to build more houses. Like, it's like, how can, would there be anything that city council can go ahead and do to attract more builders? Um, and, you know, build, uh, more houses, I guess, if that's possible? I mean, it kinda seems like, let's figure out how many houses we can go ahead and build, right? Like, that's my logical thinking, you know? And then, um, kinda go from there, basically.
Well, you have to be responsible with the decision, so you can't just simply say, we wanna build more houses. It has to be, just like we talked about earlier, it has to be responsible, it has to be in the right area.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, has to be within our comprehensive plan, which is our future plan.
Hmm.
Um, has to be cohesive and, and you have to be friendly to the neighbors that are around these developing areas, cause we are, we are getting fuller.
Yeah.
We are developing next to other subdivisions.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, there is a mixed use kind of zoning in town, which is beneficial. For instance, the project that's right next door to this building.
Yeah, yeah. You guys have to approve this zoning and so, so forth. What kinda, so what kinda zoning does this get or something like that is?
So it's a downtown.
Downtown zoning?
Kind of zoning, so it has a whole different.
And then they had to probably get a special permit, uh, kinda deal. That's why you probably had to push it to city council, and then city council then basically makes the final decision.
Yeah, and so this project that's next door had to get a special use permit related to the height. That was one of the.
Yeah, a lot of people were not too happy about that, but it was city council that made the decision. It wasn't like you guys were like, it wasn't us, you know, we gave it to city council.
Well, we, I mean, planning and zoning did, um, recommend the project to city council with a positive recommendation based on conditions.
Yeah.
Um, one of the conditions was that they, um, they did, they did ask for a higher roof line.
It probably more, means more money, uh, the, uh, building would be more profitable or so forth.
Well, it's more, more use, um, uh, just definitely, yeah, more space. Um, but the other issue related to that is, you know, downtown, uh, and it has some historical significance to it, but one of the things is urban sprawl, so we are building subdivisions out and we're taking farmland away.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So why not build up downtown?
Oh, okay.
That's a question you should ask. Why not build up?
Why not build up?
Downtown's made for it. Why not build up instead of out?
Yeah, we could, we could go really high, you know?
But our, our comprehensive plan, uh, allows for, um, to be cohesive with the, with the neighboring.
Why is everybody against like, let's not build that high? Like, listen, if we build up high, you can have more space. You could put stuff in there, do more stuff there, you know what I mean? It's like, why are we all on board? Like, let's not build up. Let's go up higher, cause like it's already there. You just need to add on to it or so forth. Interesting point. I mean, I haven't really thought about it too much. I think, uh, you know, it's probably like, well, it's because of history, you know, we don't wanna, you know, like, this building was made in nineteen oh five, you know, it's gotta stay nineteen oh five. No, no, we need to like get with the times or something, you know?
You can balance our history with, with new development as well.
Yeah.
And it's possible. The Rogers Inn Hotel was across the street and they did have to take it down, but the building deteriorated to a point where it wasn't.
Yeah, it's like, there's a lot of like maintenance and stuff like that, uh, on it. So this is very fascinating because like I said, you are essentially al- already working for the city for the planning and zoning, right? And, um, this, the way that, uh, Patrick said, this would be most likely the next logical step for you to go ahead and, uh, take to, uh, you know, to be on city council. So it's kinda like a progression or so forth. Uh, what interested you to become, wanting to become, uh, uh, running for city council? Like, what, what was the appeal? Why did you wanna, uh, get into city council, uh, you know, start making decisions there, I guess?
Sure. Well, um, you kinda hit on it a little bit. Planning and zoning does prepare you for how city government works.
Hmm.
Um, a lot of the projects that we, um, handle in planning and zoning do go to city council.
Yeah.
And, um, some of that work that you do on planning and zoning may be incomplete and you may wanna finish it. And some of it, I do wanna see some of these projects through.
Yeah.
Um, when you're making those decisions though, you're making a decision that's good for the whole city, not just personal or special interests. So, um, you definitely wanna see it through.
Hmm.
But planning and zoning, uh, time commitment wise, is similar to what city council has to do.
Yeah, when, when do you guys meet?
We meet on every other Tuesday, and then we have, um, uh, first Wednesday of the month, we have a meeting as well for training.
Yeah, is there a lot of people that, I don't, I cannot imagine a lot of people showing up to a planning and zoning meeting other than the builders.
Well, unless there's, uh, uh, a problem or an issue they have with the property going on.
Like, I have a problem with this property, so.
We've stayed up till one AM sometimes.
Oh, really?
To get everything done, so.
Yeah, what happens? Like, okay, so let's say like, uh, I have a project idea, um, I wanna put something here. And then you guys put a notice that you guys are gonna have a meeting, right?
Correct.
And then somebody can go up there, take a little ballot, uh, it's like a little, uh, piece of paper, tells them the exact date and time that this is gonna be talked about.
Yep.
Right? So whenever you see those, uh, signs and you're a little bit concerned about that property or so forth, take the sign, the little piece of paper or whatever it is, and, uh, show up to one of these meetings, you know, if you wanna have your input. But so, so basically then, uh, you know, people come and then, you know, it's a panel of you guys. The builders probably they're saying, this is what I wanna do with, uh, uh, property. These are the pros. They're probably just saying, these are your pros, 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 pros.
Well, yeah, they want their project to pass.
They want their project to be passed. And then, uh, the, the, uh, citizen is like, wait a second, I live right there, you know? So you have to kinda take into their consideration how it might affect them as well.
Yes, that's very important too. The, the citizens do need to exercise their right if they're concerned about something to, to go to the meeting. That's, that's one thing that's very important.
Yeah.
And we do take into consideration public comment, which is why we have a public hearing.
Has there ever been like a situation that you recall that like somebody, a builder wanted to build something and then a bunch of people came and they were like, no, 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 no. And then you guys were swayed that way. Does that ever happen?
There's, there's times where, um, there's been many times that there's been, uh, a large group of people, um, very angry about a project.
Hmm.
You do have to take into consideration their concerns.
Yeah.
Um, there, there's no way around it and because they're living there.
Yeah, how do you take that? How do you take, uh, their concern and then how do you weigh these options? What's, what's your weighing option, like decision-making?
You balance it out with the, with a comprehensive plan, the laws and, and the rules and regulations. And you basically have to check the boxes. Is developer doing the right thing?
Yeah.
And maybe he is doing the right thing, but also it has to be cohesive with the zoning and, and what the neighbors are also doing. So you have to balance it out.
Hmm.
Um, there is a project down, that is downtown by the old clinic, that, uh, when it first came to planning and zoning was not popular and, and it was a tough one, but.
Oh, was it another, they were gonna build up a little bit, uh, build up? There we go, the build up there.
But it was a parking issue. Um, they didn't, they didn't have enough parking.
Uh, there is not that much parking there. It's like, you would have to kinda park along that, uh, si, uh, on the park, uh, itself, uh, or, or I don't know where else, maybe the, the other area over there. But what was that supposed to be? I, I missed the memo on that.
They're apartments.
Oh, apartments.
They're not, um, they're not low income apartments. They were, they were just normal. They were kind of loft apartments on the top, just different mixed use.
Hmm.
But the issue related to that one was the parking. And they wanted to use some of the public parking and you have to have, for, for so many bedrooms you have in an apartment, you have to have the appropriate parking.
Yeah, it's like one bed, well, one, I think it's like, you have to at least have one parking lot for that person, I think, or something like that.
It's logical.
Yeah, yeah, it makes sense, cause it's like, what do you wanna do? Park in the city parking a, area itself? That's my parking area. And, uh, sometimes people even like, you know, like sometimes homeless people will just sleep out there or something like that. I don't know if the police is like patrolling that, but, um, I was like, uh, out there once and heard like noises in the park. I'm like, is somebody sleeping here? Like, uh, what the heck is going on, you know? But, uh, yeah, crazy. Don't, don't, there's an ordinance that says do not go in the park, uh, after a certain time. And otherwise the police will come to you and be like, hey, you need to leave. This is your warning. If you do not leave, you will, you know, you'll get a, uh, ordinance fee or you'll go to jail basically. So, um, do you guys deal with any kinda ordinances with planning and zoning or does that affect you?
Not too much. Um, i- if it's in relation to the future planning of the property, we do look at some of that related to traffic.
Hmm.
Um, and, and those kinda issues. We have to weigh that in as well.
Gotcha.
Is traffic gonna flow? Is the infrastructure there for the, for the project? Um, is it gonna back up traffic? Is it gonna cause, um, accidents, stuff like that?
Gotcha. Do builders ever like, okay, so like, do builders, I mean, I'm assuming the process has to be like this. Builder buys the land and then it goes to, uh, the planning and zoning. And then you basically say approve or deny on like a zoning change or so forth. Does this ever happen? We're like, hey, I'm wanting to buy this land, uh, and if you guys change it to this zoning, then I'll for sure buy it or something like that. Does that ever happen?
Well, I think you'll often find that, um, sales are pending zoning.
Sales are pending zoning? Well, there you go.
It's written in the contracts a lot.
Oh, really? So that is a thing then? It is a thing, okay?
It's a common practice.
Oh, okay. So it's a common practice. It's like, I'll buy this land if the zoning. So that's, that goes through the same exact process. The director goes in front of you guys, and then as long as the plan is all there, then, uh, that decision gets made. If you guys say yes, then, uh, they pull the trigger on buying the property or so forth. So there is no risk there basically, cause they basically make sure that it is properly zoned before they actually buy the property or so forth. Interesting. Well, now I'm glad I know that for a fact now, you know? I didn't know that was a thing. Again, I have no idea what planning and zoning does, cause, uh, what would you do to try to also, uh, get people involved in the planning and zoning, uh, process? Like, you go there, you're like, you know, you're just seeing these builders and then sometimes if something's controversial, you'll see a lot of people or so forth. Like, what would you do to just have them keep coming in and kinda get involved?
Well, one of the things that I, when you're on the commission is you have to be transparent.
Hmm.
So when a project is coming forward, oftentimes we, we do get informational packets ahead of time.
Yeah.
And that is the only information we receive.
Yeah.
And we're not really supposed to do our due diligence and dig into it some more. We're, we're, we need to be transparent in our decision and this is what's presented and this is our decision. And we didn't seek any outside influence on that. So it's a transparent po, process. So you know that when they come before us, we, we have enacted our decision on what was based in front of us.
But what's right in front of you. You get, you get the packet basically. It's like, they're called the minutes people, the minutes.
Yeah, we get a packet and, and the city does a really great job of their due diligence on all these projects.
Hmm.
They do a lot of work behind the scenes that people have no idea.
Yeah.
They do all the work for us to, to make sure that it's following the law, that it's legal.
Hmm.
Everything there, and then the information is presented to us. And then the developer also presents their information. So we're weighing both sides. And then the citizens, to get them involved, they really need to just pay attention to what's happening around them. Um, that, that's easy to say, but it's hard to do. Um, but there's a lot of projects going on around town. And if you see something you have a question about, you can always come to planning and zoning and ask a question. We have, we have time or we allow public comment.
Public comment and stuff like that. That's great, yeah, cause I think people need to go in there and like even me, me just ta, uh, talking to you like this, this is great. I feel like I'm getting an advantage here by talking to you. Is there anything about like noise? Like, like if somebody's gonna be building something and it, like, it cannot make this much noise? Is there some kinda like rules or regulations about that as well?
Yeah, that's something we consider on all these projects. Um, depending on the projects, so for instance, like a paint booth for auto body shop.
Yeah.
Fumes, noise.
Noise, yeah.
Um, you know, like a, a hair salon going in next to.
Yeah, like, uh, like, let's say I'm gonna open up a brand new, like, um, I don't know, something with music or so forth. Is there like something that says like, okay, this is like, you need this much room away from everybody or so forth?
There's an ordinance and a rule for that.
I need to look at that. I need to look at that.
Just pop it up on the, on the, on the rules and you'll be able to find it.
Is it on the, is it on the, what is it called? Uh, the planning and zoning?
You'll see some on the ordinance, but you can also see it in our, in our, in our laws on the city website.
On the city website itself. So there's, so there's like a, uh, and it's like, is it, okay, it's interesting.
In the Title Ten code, you'll see some, some rules and regulations regarding noise, so.
Gotcha. So basically, I guess, like if people were to elect you, they're basically are getting somebody that has already been in, uh, now, do you get to keep both of these positions or how does that work?
No, and that's a good question. So that would be a huge conflict of interest.
Yeah, I was like, it's like, I'll approve this and then in city council, I'll approve it as well here. So, so you can only pick one, huh?
Correct, you can only pick one. So I would, if, if elected, I would resign my position on planning and zoning.
Oh, okay. So if elected, you would resign your position on the planning and zoning. Okay, cause I was thinking, I was like, this guy's gonna be able to just say yes here and then like, yes here, for sure, for sure. Like, I'm trying to make this stuff happen here. Conflict of interest, don't worry about it.
And transparency would go out the window.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, well, that's, well, that's kinda good to know. Um, what, uh, let me, let me ask you some of these other questions here. Um, let me, I, I, I wrote down, I have like these seven questions that, uh, I wrote down and I was like, these people, if, the person with, that aligns with me with most of these is who I like the best. So we'll just kinda knock some of these out really quickly. And, uh, the first one is about graffiti and during this process, I've learned that you can simply submit a city ordinance violation and it'll get fixed. It's that simple, people. Problem from graffiti fixed. All city council members are on board of getting it removed. I'm assuming you're get, uh, uh, for getting it removed. It just kinda comes down to how do we make it easy for citizens to report where this is at, so it can get to the correct agency, I guess?
Well, I think it's important for people to know that we have a code enforcement agency.
Yeah.
And, um, they have a group of four individuals that, um, they're not, they're not police officers, but they patrol the city
Hmm.
and, and protect the city from this type of thing. And you can call code enforcement and.
Yeah.
And, and address that concern and they will take care of it. And they're very good at responding.
Yeah, I emailed them and they were like, hey, I, I see some graffiti here. They're like, send us a, I think they just want a photo and where it's at, and then, uh, they'll, they'll start the process. But the thing is, nobody is gonna do anything about graffiti unless you go ahead. And then uh they'll they'll start the process. But the thing is, nobody is gonna do anything about graffiti unless you go ahead and because like they have to be driving and seeing it. If they miss it, it's not, you know, it's like
Comes back to citizens.
The citizens, it's up to you guys, you know, so we can fix the graffiti problem. We just need to go ahead and let the people uh that are uh in charge of that know where it's at. Simple. So that's what I kind of learned from here. It was very interesting. Um, so I would say you're, you would be on board to try to make it easy for people or something like that.
Yeah, I think it's just information, letting people know that we have this this committee in our in our city that not only city council supports it, but we, it's part of our our government that enforces this and is there to help us.
Yeah, I was asking a silly question. It was just basically because I was uh didn't know, just didn't know.
No, not silly at all.
Well, now, yeah, now we know, I guess. Um, so, so yeah, I'm gonna keep you on a yes on there for sure. Uh, and then another big component that I'm kind of like advocating for is improving the dog park. Uh, and that one is in parks uh zoned as like a park essentially, right? Um, and that's all that like uh your committee does essentially. It just says, this is a park. These are kind of like the rules for it or so forth. What I'm trying to advocate for it is like improving of that particular park. Because in my opinion, I think it's the most utilized park throughout the year. People are go there all year long because dogs are not like, well, it's cold, you know, they gotta go there. So it gets used all year round. Um, do you think it's a good idea to have like a shelter there or something that protects people from like the wind and snow and things like that? Or maybe just in general, improving it?
Well, it's been, it it's long overdue to improve it anyways.
Yeah.
Um, it's been around for a little while.
Yeah.
Um, the other side of that is that the city's grown enough that maybe we need more than one.
Oh, yeah. It's what I said too. It's like the city's grown. We already have these parks. You can, you can kind of almost zoning it, you know, like you're, this park is zoned for just the dog. You just need a fence around it and you call it a day that people pick up their dog poop there. Because I cannot let my dog go off leash uh in the city park or any other park other than the dog park itself. You know, because one, I don't know if she's gonna run in front of traffic, cause an accident or so forth. But if we had, if we were like using some of these parks as something different or just adding to it, that'd be amazing, you know? Because like, not everybody wants to drive from one end of the town all the way to the other end of the town, you know? And I don't think uh code enforcement is really too keen on, they don't wanna uh say to person like, hey, your dog needs to be on a leash. It's kind of like, I think they have other ordinances that they're more concerned about or so forth.
No, you're exactly right. And and um honestly, to to make a change regarding this, um, there are subcommittees within city council, Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec Committee.
And um, starting there.
Starting there would be.
There's a great way because it can move up the chain to to city council for improvements.
Yeah, exactly. So, yeah, so again, but this is so great because again, more learning. So if somebody wants to change like this, like, oh yeah, let's do that. They gotta go in for the Parks and Rec Committee. And to get in front of Parks and Rec Committee, they gotta get in touch with the Parks and Rec Director essentially. And then bada bing bada boom, you're on.
It's a process, but um, but the city's receptive to to for for the citizens to speak up.
Yeah, they wanna hear what you gotta say. Uh, and you just gotta go out, uh, go there and uh, you know, say, hey, this is what my opinion is essentially. Um, so um, I would say, yes, you're on board on the dog park stuff.
I mean, there there needs to be more green space in in the city. That's what attracts people to to our city, the the green, the green areas, the green belt we have on the canyon.
Yeah, people love that.
But people have dogs and they're, and we need to have it more accessible to everybody. I think we'll we'll find more people who wanna wanna live here.
It's kind of like if we have cool stuff uh in Twin Falls, uh, people are more willing to come and, you know, live here. You know what I mean? It's like, this is a cool city, you know? We got some cool stuff here.
They wanna participate in other things as well.
Yeah, exactly. Um, does anything stand out uh in your like working for the planning and zoning, like, oh, this is cool? Like uh, did you ever feel like I'm approving something that's cool and then it gets uh made or so forth?
Well, uh, it's a good question. Related to parks, just about a month ago, um, when a developer develops a subdivision, they um, the city requires them to build a park.
Yeah.
Or pay money in lieu of that park. And sometimes what the city receives from those parks is kind of a drainage area. It's not usable space, but it is technically dedicated as a park. The impact fees were changed recently.
Yeah, I've been hearing about these impact fees.
So they they enacted an impact fee for parks. And therefore, the developer doesn't have to pay for the park or or develop a park in a subdivision. The city will get uh, will charge an impact fee.
Oh, so it's like charge a fee for, and then you have to build the.
They can build a park where it's needed.
Okay.
For instance, if we wanted another dog park, the city could decide
Using impact fees.
Using impact fees from the growth, so.
Yeah, yeah, that's interesting. Didn't, see, I had no idea how these impact fees work. Uh, I just recently big became aware of these impact fees. So uh, is there like a list of all of these impact fees or something like that somebody can look at?
Yeah, you can look on the website and see the the and the new impact fees are just enacted, so.
See, I don't know. I see this is like, I'm not aware of these. I don't think the common person is like, yeah, you know about these impact fees? No, I don't know about these impact fees. They're just, they're like, whoa, something's happening. I don't know.
Well, the reason why they're in the forefront right now is a lot of them haven't been updated in in maybe ten years or more.
Yeah, that's what.
So the fees were quite low. Um, so the reason it's on the radar right now is the fees were raised. But if you find most of the developers and builders in town were in favor of of the impact fee anyways.
Yeah.
Um, they just wanted to be, um, they they just want to be communicated that it was happening.
Yeah.
And basically, it's just communicating with the people, but they had no problem with the impact fee at all.
Okay, so the builders are fine with it.
They're okay with it. They just wanted to be um in in the know, like it was coming.
It was coming.
So it's communication.
Yeah, so so yeah, I think Hannah said uh the impact fees were very low. And then we just basically raise them up to the national average or something like that. Um, I had one candidate say that these impacts went through the roof or something like that, but I guess it did because they were so low, you know?
Yeah, they were. And that's that's the proportion. It was so low that when we raised it.
So I guess it's different, different views, you know what I mean? It's like we brought them, you can kind of say, you know, they went through the roof or they're, they've been brought up to the average where everybody else is at.
And I think you'll find that they're gonna review this more often so that it's not such a shock as we move forward as the city grows.
Does that make the houses go uh uh make them higher then?
Makes a little co- more costly for the.
The builder. Yeah, it increases. So then, so yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, it's like, we could have left them low, but then, you know, uh, I don't know. It's a, that's a really tough call on that. You gotta really kind of weigh all your options and see exactly. Because like, if we get these impact fees, then you get this other stuff. But if you don't increase the impact fees, then uh, you know, the things stay the same essentially.
Well, yeah, for instance, uh, we haven't had a new fire station in thirty plus years. And we finally are getting one on the on the north uh northwest side of town.
Oh, yeah.
That's long overdue because that's where the growth is right now. And that will reduce their response time, which is sorely necessary.
Yeah, I I'm definitely pro, you know, let's get, you know, like uh, let's get a fire truck if it's needed. You know what I mean? If like uh, and and kind of like uh, basically, everybody's on board to just make sure that the police and the fire department have the resources that they need. Uh, and it seems like uh all candidates uh are on board on that idea itself. Um, what about like the streets themselves? Do you guys do anything in planning and zoning about the streets?
So uh, for new development, we do decide on streets and sidewalks. Occasionally, developers sometimes don't want to add sidewalks in certain areas. I think you'll find this.
This is why we don't have a, we don't have some of these, because I've been, I go around some places. I'm like, there's no sidewalk here. I was like, how is this allowed to be built without a sidewalk? But it's an option that the builder.
It was an option.
Back in the day?
Those were made. Yeah, now it's not an option. It is required.
Oh.
But some of those, those properties were not developed with that, that need. And and you, and that's, that's a problem.
That's crazy. It's like, how, how did this city back in the day was like, you know, we don't need sidewalks? It's like, are you out of your mind? So now they have to backtrack on this. We're like, listen, you guys pay half and we'll pay the other half. There's some kind of program like that.
There is. There's a sidewalk program.
Sidewalk program.
For repairs and stuff like that.
I think they also do uh, do, I think maybe it's like eighty percent they pay and then the other uh, you know.
Certain percentage of the year, per per year, so.
Something, somebody's, yeah, I think uh, they really, they really kind of like uh, they really kind of like to, you know, say, look at us, we fixed some of these sidewalks, you know?
Well, it's in the city budget for this year. There's certain areas that they are gonna go in and and add sidewalks.
Yeah.
That haven't been added before. It's in the budget every year.
Yeah.
And they, and they, and it's part based on future growth because they have all the new development, but we gotta also fix some of the older parts too.
Yeah, I think we also need to make an easy way for citizens to report, hey, I think there needs to be a sidewalk here. You know what I mean? The thing is, the city is uh passive, not reactive, I would say. You know, where they're basically are gonna be like, well, we'll make the sidewalk, uh, but uh, the person has to pay for it and then we'll reimburse it. It's like, what? Are you out of your mind? Who's gonna be like, I can't wait to come home after my nine to five and get this sidewalk, uh, you know, contracted to be built? You know, it's like, let's be proactive and get this stuff done versus like uh, you know, just kind of even going to the citizens if the eighty uh, eight, if it's an eighty twenty split or whatever, right? Be like, like, hey, we'll uh pay eighty percent. You just have to pay this much for this. Do you want? Yes or no? And then we just kind of go from there. I mean, that just blows my mind. Let's do that, you know?
Yeah, and it's something that definitely needs to be looked at because there, we're not connected in the city at all. Bike lanes are sidewalks. It's hard to get around.
It's so hard to get around. How do people get around? You have to have a car like in Twin Falls.
Yes, and that's another issue because we do need public transportation.
Yeah, what do you know about this whole public transportation itself?
Well, you know, it's a federal mandate that if you reach a certain.
Yeah, we've hit that apparently, yeah.
We're gonna reach it.
Well, some people say, this is so confusing. Some people say we've reached it. Some people say we haven't reached it. It's like, what is it? We've reached it or we've not? It's like, who do I need to talk to to see if we reached it or not?
It's based on the census.
Yeah, the census. Yeah, so it's like, what is the actual number and where are we at with it right now?
So I think we're, I mean, the census tally is not completely in yet due to delays in COVID, but it's predicted at fifty-five thousand.
Fifty-five thousand.
Two to fifty-five thousand.
Oh, okay, so you think.
You'll see it in the, in the city manager's budget, but I think I have it here.
You got the budget as well. See, everybody's like, I've I've got a budget too, you know, you've got, look at that. There's your budget right there. Yeah, nice binder. Every, I was advocating that every citizen needs to have one of these, right? Like give him like uh, maybe a PDF. We would be killing a lot of trees if we were giving out one of these to everybody.
I keep this on my iPad. It's important for planning and zoning as well, comprehensive plan as well.
Yeah.
But yeah, it says in July, July two thousand nineteen, we're fifty thousand one ninety-seven.
Oh, okay.
It's, we haven't, we're at a prediction. They base their budget on what we think we're gonna be at, which is about fifty-five thousand.
So then what happens is they, the city then has to go ahead, well, it opens them up for federal grants, right? Where they can say, we need this money to go ahead and do this. And then basically uh, they'll probably reach out to some kind of um, like third party that'll basically assess and kind of give people like the city council options, I'm assuming.
Correct. They're already working on that as a matter of fact.
Oh, they're already working on it. We're.
They started uh, even probably a year ago.
Oh, really? See, like.
So they're working on it.
It's so funny because like, the thing is like, people are like uh, we need to figure this out. But the thing is like, it's already happening, you know? And how can people kind of like get involved in this, I guess, or see where where things are at or so forth? How does that uh come about?
Well, due to COVID, a lot of this stuff didn't get out or didn't get worked on, but um, the city council, the the whole city government is, or it's working on that.
Yeah.
They're gonna make the information accessible and and um, to let people know what they're proposing, what is a good idea. They're interested, I believe, in city input. And that's what's important about city council is they need to be.
Then you're gonna see, yeah, because uh, I think one of the candidates was like, uh, didn't really like this bus idea too much. But I was like, I think we're gonna have to have buses. It's like, how else do you do it? It's like, it was like, maybe an Uber system? That, you know, it's like, what? Uh, I don't know if that's gonna work, but uh, sure, you know, I guess you can have that input right now itself, you know? Uh, so that way, you know, city council as a whole gets to make a decision or so forth. Uh, what else have you found out? Like, you know, I like to kind of see what, you know, when you dig into this stuff, you might find something interesting that it's like, ooh.
Related to that population, so it, just because our population says we're at fifty-two thousand. If you look at our daily population, the amount of people that are in town during the day, it's sometimes a hundred thousand people.
You think there's a hundred thousand people here?
They, it's, it shows, the data shows.
The data shows that there's a hundred thousand people in Twin Falls?
During the day.
During the day?
Yeah.
You're blowing my mind. I cannot believe that. That's uh crazy, dude. Probably because of the dead of the little uh thingy that they cross.
Well, that's part of, part of one of the things that that'll determine that. But the, the, yeah, it's um, because we're kind of a hub for the whole Magic Valley, Twin Falls.
Yeah, people come here.
They're coming to work, they're coming to shop, they're coming to eat.
The city is not really population of fifty thousand. It's a daytime population is a hundred thousand.
I think people are feeling that right now.
Yeah, Blue Lakes is back, Washington gets packed. What, do you have any ideas like uh, how to like divert some of this traffic? Uh, so that way people are like, because like, you have to figure out, city council has to figure out like, okay, we've like, it's almost kind of like this game SimCity. I don't know if you've ever played this, yeah, SimCity uh game where you're like, you know, like you're running the whole city and so forth. Too much traffic and then you gotta build roads to go ahead and remove the congestion or so forth. So if you think it's easy to run a city, get this game, SimCity, you know, like there's a brand new version of it and try to manage a city, you know? It'd be so interesting to like uh, make SimCity exactly uh how Twin Falls is. And then see what kind of problems arise in the game and then try to fix them.
And they, and they have tools similar to that, that that helps them determine these things.
Oh, really? Oh, see, uh, see, I had no idea. So uh, so there is some kind of tools that'll figure out like, okay, uh, this is how much congestion you're getting here. You need to divert.
Oh, yeah, they have road data for that.
Hold on, this, uh, I gotta call, these scammers always keep calling. You know what I'm talking about? Like, your insurance is about to expire or something like that.
It is a problem.
Yeah.
Well, you know, for instance, uh, across the Prime Bridge, it's thirty thousand cars a day or something like that, thirty to fifty thousand cars a day.
What?
Um, day, these are daily trips.
Daily trips.
Pole Line Road, thirteen thousand one hundred, Addison Avenue West, eleven thousand five hundred, Kimberly Road, ten thousand three hundred.
You're gonna have to leave that with me.
So the total of that's eighty-one thousand some trips a day down our major artillery roadways.
Wow, yeah.
So in just estimated inbound is forty thousand.
Oh, okay.
Forty-one thousand.
What? That's why uh, it's so congested around here. It's not that our population is fifty thousand. It's a hundred thousand in midday or something like that, you know? And where are these people coming from? They're just surrounding areas or so forth? They're all kind of.
Yeah, we we support the, all the surrounding communities, so.
Mm hmm, gotcha, gotcha. Okay, that's, that makes sense. Um, well, that's very interesting. What else have you uh noticed in there?
Well, um, related to the housing, um, the median house value in twenty-one looks like it's two hundred nineteen thousand.
Okay.
Um, next year, they're predicting two hundred fifty-three thousand. That's just the average. Um, Idaho's average is four hundred and three thousand.
So houses are going up no matter what. So it's like, you, if you didn't buy a house, you've missed the boat, you know? I mean, you can buy, you can buy one now and then hope that everything goes up. So, you know, you just don't know, you know?
But that's, that's one of the issues though, is we've, we may have outpriced some of our local citizens.
Yeah, that's the problem. It's like we've, you uh, we're outpricing what people can afford. And then we're almost kind of putting them in like a dangerous situation that if they cannot pay these mortgages, they're they're gonna become homeless. And it's like, what are they gonna do then? You know, because the thing is like, if you default on your like uh mortgage or so forth, what ends up happening is the bank or the owner of the building or whatever, right? They need their money essentially. So they have a process which is like, they start, you know, the court or something like that and uh eviction process. And then it just basically our local officers or like the chief or so forth is like, sorry, we, I gotta do this. You know, you gotta be kicked out or something like that is my understanding. So it's a dangerous game, in my opinion, uh, driving up these houses way higher. It, when back in the day, when they were much more affordable, people were like a little bit easier. But now we're just driving them up through the roof, but we don't have the jobs where they can uh support these houses, you know?
Yeah, that's an issue as well, where um, the city of Twin Falls itself, its own entity is looking for workers.
Yeah.
Uh, we're having a hard time finding, finding workers in the whole city. Every business around town is feeling it. My business included. We're looking for workers right now.
Yeah.
Um, but related to that, the skilled workers, the workers, um, I I talked to the manager at Applebee's the other day. And she told me her friend works at the Holiday Inn and that hotel is pretty much full of people living there because they can't find a place to live.
Oh, my God.
That's tough. So not only is it affordable housing, like to buy a house, but rental housing as well. We we need.
That's uh interesting. I never thought about it that way. You could technically do that, but we do also have like uh, like a really um, I don't know where I was going with that, but uh, but go ahead, keep going.
Well, no, it's just, it, all types of housing are needed in the city because it has grown so fast. Um, but the prices have gone up to the point where we need to balance it out a little bit. And the city council has ability to to help provide some affordable housing, not subsidized housing, but affordable housing.
Affordable housing. How does that work?
Well, it's, it's really, there's partnerships with the government.
Government and the uh, and builders?
Builders, yeah. So you wanna partner with developers to, because you can develop.
So, so what do they do? They look at like, uh, okay, this is the average income and then we basically. They look at like, okay, this is the average income and then we basically need to build houses based off of this average income of the houses? And then somebody, if somebody qualifies and they're in this range, then they can go ahead and apply for this house or so forth. How many of those projects do we have in development now?
There's not very many.
Not very many?
Doesn't mean they're not working on it, they're, they're, we're talking about it and the fact that we're talking about it here is a good step forward.
Yeah, yeah.
But it is something that city council probably needs to tackle.
Yeah, like, yeah, definitely, that, that sounds, I like this idea. It's like, let's, somebody said something about that, it's like, but would you want the, uh, city then deciding where people live? But it's like, that's the compromise that you have to kind of make at that point, that it's like, it's like, they'll make a subdivision here and then it'll be based off of, uh, the income that people are making and so forth, right?
But you, but you have to partner with developers too, it has to be lucrative for both parties. And, um, there are projects in other cities that, um, build, um, single-family homes for people to rent as well.
Yeah.
Um, not subsidized, but it's affordable.
Okay.
Um, and then eventually the developer can decide to sell that home or those, those homes if the market does change.
Okay.
So it balances out, they're doing this in other cities all around us, they're doing it in Boise too.
There is models of this, we just have to look at them and say, hey, do we wanna go ahead and do this? I think I like your idea there, that's our, that's our, it's like, it's like, let's look at what other people are doing to combat this and make it happen essentially.
Yeah, and, and it gives us the benefit, the way out if it's good or bad, so.
Yeah, yeah, uh, great, 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 great. Let me get to a few more, uh, questions here that I have. And this one's about an event center. So this all kind of started in my head where I kind of reminded myself, I was like, it started, I went to Boise and they had this like outdoor event center with, called Life in Color and there's like, bunch of people, this is all pre-COVID though, you know? Like, a bunch of people, they were all like getting spray painted with paint and, you know? And I was like, my God, this would be so cool if it was in Twin Falls. It would help the local economy, like, people would be like spending the night, we have a hundred thousand people here apparently. They would come and, uh, spend the night, making, filling up the hotels, motels, spend money in the local economy, things like that. Do you think we need an event center that's large enough, uh, to put maybe ten thousand of those people of a hundred thousand people apparently?
Yes, definitely, um, it's one thing we're lacking in, in town. We have a lot of options, we're gaining more options every day, but that's one option we don't have.
Yeah.
And it would bring in more than, than people think, I think it would be an element that would be beyond our, our greatest hope that, um, that people can congregate, uh, it can be used. Uh, we have a wonderful environment to put something like that in.
Yeah.
I know there was an outdoor one proposed by Rock Creek. What a great idea.
Yeah.
It's, it's still in the planning stages, I know that he received a no answer, but I hope they don't give up because, um, I think it's, it'll be viable.
What would you say to, uh, potentially taking that? And, uh, you know, this is so funny, I got, I got really, I did a deep dive on the event center, right? And, you know, here's kind of like the example of the one in Boise, right? It's just a bunch of people, cool concert and they can do stuff like that, a bunch of people. What about, uh, taking a little chunk of a Sunway soccer complex, right? And then putting it, uh, maybe over there, uh, boom, bada bing bada boom, you know?
That would solve some, some noise issues that might, people might be related to.
Yeah, it's so far out, you know, it's like noise.
Not too far, so.
Yeah, it's too far and then it's close enough, big enough and it would attract a lot of, uh, like, uh, bigger bands, you know what I mean? Like, I like the idea of having bigger bands come in and then get people excited, you know what I mean? Oh, I can't wait because of this band is here. The thing is, Twin Falls is not in a position where, uh, like, big bands are like, oh, I can't wait to go to Twin Falls.
Yeah, no, not yet.
Not yet.
But your proposal or your idea is also dual purpose, so.
Yeah, it's a dual purpose.
It's great.
Yeah, it's like, you, you're not really getting rid of this whole thing, you're still, it's like you're using it essentially. So I'm gonna say, you, you like it, you like the idea, I guess. That's cool. All right, and then moving on to, okay, here's a crazy. This is, this one I have mixed, uh, feelings about, but I was like, hey, you know, this would definitely make a lot of stuff, a lot of money for the city itself, which was, uh, get to the bottom of Shoshone Falls. And I'm kind of torn on this, um, I have everybody's answer how they feel about that, you know? I have some people saying yes, then I have some people saying no. Uh, and, uh, the yes is because, oh, that's a cool idea, it's really cool down there, it gives people a whole new experience. The no is, we can potentially ruin the beauty that's down there itself. So you have to kind of weigh these options itself. If we could have a gondola that basically takes you to the bottom and you can have handicapped accessible people that can get in there, you know, like, uh, like a grandma that's eighty years old, has never seen Shoshone Falls from the bottom, it's like a whole different experience, would you be like, let's preserve it or let's make the gondola, you know?
Well, there's, there's a balance there that, that can happen both ways.
I think maybe it's like, what do the people want?
Yeah, but if you, if you look at our history, that at one time there was a stairway that went down.
Yeah, 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 there was.
For that reason, and, um, why not, so in a way that's preserving history. Yeah, it is important to preserve the, the beauty of the park. But I think the city is equipped to balance that out anyways.
Yeah.
Um, the revenue, the city, that Shoshone Falls area is a great revenue driver for the city.
This could be another, like, I wouldn't even mind paying like ten bucks to take the gondola down, you know what I mean? It's like, sure, uh, as long as you take that money and reinvest it back into the Shoshone Falls or the city for bigger, better projects itself, you know, things like that essentially.
I think it's a, it's a fine idea. It's a, it's a new way to expand on our beauty of our cities.
Yeah, exactly, it's, we could almost have, uh, uh, the Hey Arnold mist, you know, boat that takes you right there. Hilarious, but, uh, what was I gonna say? What's interesting about those stairs is part of the stairs are still there, they're blocked off, right? There's like a fence that Parks and Rec put there and, uh, and what happens is like, if you kind of walk on that a little bit, it just dead drops and it's like death, pretty much. So it's like, this is, this is the reason the fence is there is because they don't want somebody getting on there and falling off. But I was looking at old photos and how they did this stairs is mind-boggling. You don't wanna know how, they attached it to the rock wall and it was going down. It wasn't like you just kind of follow down the path or something like that. They attached some crazy like, uh, ladders against the side of the canyon and it's kind of like, I'll see if I can find that photo and it's like, I was like, it was like, that's not the way to go. What's interesting is, uh, across Shoshone Falls, there are already stairs. At Idaho Power has some stairs that takes you to the bottom, you know? There are stairs, the thing is, you just can't use them, you know what I mean? It's on private property, it's like, sorry, so you have to kind of like, uh, you have to, basically, the only option for people to go to the bottom of Shoshone Falls is kayak. Brutal, like, take many, many, many waters, okay? Like, I remember the first time I did it, you can also walk the shoreline when the water is like receded and so forth, but not, it's not as cool. And then you can also, uh, I know AWOL, that's down there at Centennial, they do a boat tour all the way to Pillar Falls and they also do a, a trip to Shoshone Falls. Will they have kayaks ready to go on the other side, making it so more easy convenient? This is kind of like the next step, uh, is making it. And the thing is, like, people love going down there and checking it out, even people seeing it from the top, like, so cool, you know?
Yeah, it's accessible, so that, that, your idea would be accessible for everybody.
Yeah, accessible for everybody, uh, little kids, you know, and it's like, wow. But again, it kind of feels like, do we sell our soul by doing this? Or do we just preserve it as how it is, you know what I mean?
Yeah, eventually there's gonna be a way to do this though, that'll balance out both.
Yeah, because it needs to be a fine balance itself, uh, where it's, and again, I would kind of throw it back to the people. If the majority of the people that are residents of Twin Falls, they say, yes, we need this, then I say, yeah, then if, but they've, they're like, a lot of them are like, no, then we just basically majority go no essentially. Okay, well, and then you've essentially answered all of those questions, which is great. What, uh, makes you stand out, uh, from other candidates other than being, you know, you're already involved in, um, planning and zoning?
Um, well, I've, I've lived in the Magic Valley my whole life, um, I'm invested here, um, my family's invested here. Uh, I think that's important, some of the other candidates not necessarily are from here or new to the valley. I think it's important to, to have a foothold on our history, but a foothold to the future as well.
Okay.
I have that being here and living here, um, I work here.
Yeah, you're in it.
A minute, and, and, and it doesn't say that the other candidates are not, but, um, when you're, when you have history here, my family has history here. You know, we've been in the valley a long time, my, my, my parents were business owners here, so we know the difficulties, um, we also know the rewards, so.
Yeah, 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 and how can people, people can already vote right now with the early voting, right? Do you, uh, they can go to where the DMV is basically?
County West, yeah.
Yeah, it's called County West, but like, I like to think about it like the, where the new DMV is at.
So go past the DMV.
Yeah, past the DMV, there's like a, like a, uh,
It's Office of Elections.
Office of Elections, uh, right there, there's somebody probably there that can probably direct you exactly where it's at.
They do, yeah.
So, the, um, yeah, it's so easy to just go out there because this round, we just, basically, people are gonna be choosing two bubbles.
Correct.
Boop, boop, and, uh, it's so easy. What would you say to the people that, you know, they're like, ah, you know, I'm not gonna really go vote, it doesn't really make any change, what would you say to them? It's like to, you know, like, get them encouraged to go to vote and so forth.
Well, that's, that's a very good question, so, I hear that a lot, well, my vote doesn't count.
Yeah.
But it, but it does. One vote does make a difference, you're exercising your right. And, and one of the reasons why I say that is, I, I have traveled all over the world for my job. I've been in countries where basic rights like voting are, are not allowed. There are people all over the world that would give anything to have what we have, to make a difference. One vote does make a difference, I know that's cliche to say, but it does. And the other side of that is, if you're, if you are upset about something in your city or if you wanna make a change, voting is a great place to start.
Yeah.
Typically, this odd year elections are, are low voter turnout.
Yeah, it's, uh, somebody said five thousand people come out to vote of fifty, what was the number again? Fifty?
Fifty-two thousand.
Fifty-two thousand people live here and all, well, I don't know exactly how many of them all registered to vote. But I should probably look into that at one point. But, uh, that many people, only five thousand people come out, I don't know exactly what the percentage of that is, but that's like, one, two percent, I don't, like, it can't be that low.
That's maybe only ten or thirteen percent.
Oh, ten or thirteen, my, my estimation is very off.
But, uh, but to exercise your vote, but the other part about it is, um, for instance, what you're doing, what you and I are doing right now is available for people to listen to.
Yeah.
And being informed and getting out there and being involved and making a change, that's, that's one way to start.
I'm trying to drive this idea to people that, hey, you like this guy? Or like anybody that I'm talking to, right? Hey, you like this person? You can ask them other questions that I haven't asked and see exactly where they stand. The information is on the website, the city's website. Shoot you an email, I have some questions for you and then they basically can kind of get to know you a little bit more, you know? And there you go, and then I don't know, is there gonna be any other campaigning that you're gonna be doing this week or so forth?
Well, I'm, uh, so one of my, I guess, core values is talking to people.
Yeah.
And, um, because, for instance, related to voting, when I've done some door-to-door, which, by the way, I don't like to do, because I don't wanna bother people.
Yeah, it's like, I'm, like, they're probably like, who the heck is, you know, the thing is like, the thing is like, our society has changed. It used to be like, somebody knocks on the door, like, who's this? I'm so excited to see, you know, hey, come on in. But now it's like, lock the windows, peep through the hole, it's like, uh, there's this really funny skit that I saw, like, uh, it was so funny, like this, uh, he's like, hide under the tables, you know, who's here, you know? Like, did you call anybody? It's like, you know, like, this is like, text me before you get here, something like that. People don't like people approaching their houses. This must be really tough to go ahead and kind of do, uh, going door-to-door, to try to talk to people.
But the one thing, well, related to voting is what I'm appalled at is a lot of people, um, don't know where to go vote, which means they haven't voted.
Yeah, yeah.
So getting that information out would, would be important. Hey, this is where you go to vote, this is how easy it is to do it, um, and you do make a difference and, and drive it home.
Yeah.
Um, and I, you know, people have concerns, so.
Yeah, I've been, I've been kind of almost advocating like, we need an app that basically reports graffiti, reports problems, tells people where they need to vote, uh, what the days are that this is happening, all in an easy, convenient app that anybody that has a Android phone or an Apple phone can go ahead and utilize.
Well, and that's something, uh, I, I know city council has talked about this same thing before. It's something that we need to talk about in the future.
Yeah, listen, I'll do it, uh, hold on a second, hearing somebody else message me something, uh, uh, I, I, we'll make it happen, okay? Well, uh, even if the city doesn't want it, I'll give it to them, you know what I mean? Like, hey, listen, I don't really care.
It's important, information is important.
Yeah, 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 exactly. And, uh, let me just see if there's anything else I wanted to ask you. I think this has been a really good conversation, is there anything you think we are missing or, or like, or better yet, here's a good question. Like, when you go to, ah, geez, I don't know, I'm like, shh, shh, podcast's happening, I just need to put my phone on, uh, silent when this is happening, uh, is there a common question that you're getting when you're going door-to-door? What do people typically ask you, like, that's, that we haven't talked about?
Well, it's related, it's, it's mostly growth, everybody's worried about growth. Not necessarily worried, but because with, with growth comes opportunity and, and issue. Um, but everybody's just worried about, um, infrastructure, um, making sure, the same things we just talked about. Things aren't connected, getting them connected, making things accessible.
Yeah.
But the other part about it was, people are worried about transparency within city council. There are some special interests, um, related to some candidates and people are worried about being transparent or being at the-
Special interest with candidates, how does that, what does that even?
Special interest money, um, paid to, for, to candidates.
Oh, I didn't know that was even a thing.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't either until I started this process, so.
How, what, like, oh, who's getting money for special interest, that's insane.
You know, it's politics in its, in its finest and, you know, the-
It's like, you would have to poll, uh, everybody, every candidate's, uh, budget, uh-
Which is transparent anyway.
Yeah, it's like, you would have to make a public request to see exactly who, who's getting money from who because that special interest group has to make it public, uh, to go ahead and do that. But the thing is, like, people don't even know how to make a public request to go ahead and see this.
Correct.
It's online, you know, just, it's all right there, fill out a form, bada bing bada boom, you know?
But, but one of the things that people are, are asking about is, uh, city council needs to be accessible to the citizens.
Yeah.
Needs to be transparent and they need to be honest.
Yeah.
And they need to, their due diligence, not just attending meetings, but analyzing the data, being accessible to citizens and getting the information out.
Yeah.
That's key, being accessible.
Yeah, I would love to have like, uh, everything be super, super transparent, uh, and also easy for people to understand because part of the problem, maybe this is a part of the problem, is like, who do you think actually reads this budget?
Oh, hardly, hardly anybody.
Hardly anybody?
But there's a summary out there.
Yeah, there's a summary, yeah.
That's a lot easier to read, so. I mean, our city budget has actually gone down this year.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it was up and then it went down a little bit, I thought it was gonna keep going up.
Yeah, well, typically it usually does, so, in a sense, they're being a little more fiscal responsible, which is important. That's, that's another thing I hear when I'm out there talking to people.
Yeah.
Be responsible with our money.
Gotcha, so you like the idea of, you're a little bit concerned, well, uh, are you concerned that, that the, currently the way the city is, that it's hard for it to grow? Or can we do stuff to make it grow, uh, you know, so it can support more people and so forth, you know?
I think, um, with the fact that the city council and planning and zoning have actively engaged in rewriting our codes, rewriting our laws to make it easier and accessible for people to understand what's permitted, what you can do with the law, where you can do something, that was a good first step.
Yeah.
Um, and we're moving forward in that same direction.
Yeah.
There's also gonna be a review of the comprehensive plan coming up.
Yeah.
Because you need to do that.
Yeah, so that's a comprehensive plan is like the overview of everything and then you can, people, then they can need, they check to make sure that this is, we still align to these, uh, things that we wanna go ahead and do.
You know, for instance, our industrial area in the city of Twin Falls, um, we're out of, we're out of industrial zoned land basically.
Oh, so they can't build, they need to zone.
Anytime someone comes forward for a new industrial, whatever, they have to get it rezoned.
Oh, okay.
So the comprehensive plan does show, um, where industrial zone will be and, and we're gonna take that next step.
Yeah.
But, um, you know, related to warehousing and stuff like that, um, our outlying cities are, are kind of catching on and building warehouses in the city of Twin Falls is not, and it's sorely needed space, it's an industrial space, so.
Interesting, yeah, all, I mean, I feel like we could talk forever about all kinds of different things, but I think, uh, we've had a good, uh, uh, hour here, I think we've got a lot, uh, from you. I need to charge these scammers up, really, what I need to do, and I probably need to go somewhere else too. But again, if people wanna get in touch with you, they can, uh, go to the city's website and then they'll have your email. But again, if people wanna get in touch with you, they can, uh, go to the city's website and then they'll have your email. What's your email address?
It's my name, craig.kelly@outlook.com.
Perfect.
And I do, I do answer them, so.
Shoot him an email if I, if I didn't, uh, get something covered here or so forth. And then, uh, he can answer to his best ability and so forth. So, great. Well, uh, it was nice meeting you. Uh, thanks for coming out and doing this.
No, thanks for doing this period. That's great that you're, it's a service, so.
Oh, great. Well, thanks. All right. Are you, well, all right. I think we're good here then. All right, awesome.